All right, good evening. This is Monday, January 31st, 2022. This is a special meeting and workshop for the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open a meeting? Cynthia, Lori, all in favor? All right, we're just going to go right into executive session. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session? Lori, Cynthia, all in favor? All right, great. We'll be back at 7:30 for the workshop. Thank you. January 31st, 2022. This is a special meeting and workshop for the Board of Education. We already opened the meeting at 6:30. We had an executive session for an hour, and now we're back for the meeting and workshop. Our first order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Goodman to kick us off with our presentations.
Good evening, board trustees, our esteemed teachers and administrators that are here tonight, parents and community at home. Our first presentation will be on the school lunch program. Faith Sparks, our business official, will be presenting on this school lunch program. She will give an overview of the federal national lunch program as well as the guidelines we are required to follow to meet federal meal pattern requirements. These federal meal pattern requirements dictate allowable size portions, calorie counts, and the number of servings in each food group per meal, per day, and per week. She will discuss the impacts the pandemic had on our food service program and changes implemented this year as we begin to return to pre-pandemic food service. Accompanying Ms. Sparks tonight will be Heather Bigley, president of HMB Consultants. HMB Consultants has over 33 years of school nutrition experience. They provide child nutrition consulting to our districts such as operational and financial assessments, staff training, school self-reviews, compliance assessments, and menu reviews. Nick Test to Selvus is our new food service manager from Aramark. He's been doing an excellent job of updating our program, and Ms. Sparks will be joined by him. Also, John McLaughlin is our Aramark district manager, and we welcome them all here tonight. Faith?
Ms. Sparks, thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Tonight I will be presenting on our food service program. The National School Lunch Program is a federally assisted meal program operating in public and nonprofit private schools and residential care institutions. Signed into law by President Harry Truman in 1946, it provides nutritionally balanced, low- or no-cost lunches to children each school day. The food and nutrition service of the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, administers the program at the federal level. At the state level, the National School Lunch Program is administered by state agencies, which operate the program through agreements with school districts, which are also known as the school food authorities. For the 2122 school year, the USDA has extended free meals to all students through the end of the year. Participating school districts receive subsidies and USDA foods for each reimbursable meal that we sell. In exchange, institutions must serve lunches that meet federal meal pattern requirements and offer lunches at free or reduced cost to eligible children. These federal meal pattern requirements dictate portion sizes, calorie counts, and the number of servings in each food group per day and per week. This is a chart that we have posted at our registers. To qualify as a free meal under the National School Lunch Program, at least three of the five components must be chosen. Our goal is to serve nutritious, well-balanced meals that appeal to students and the community and that meet the National School Lunch Program requirements. Anything less than the three components or an additional sixth component is considered an à la carte item and will incur a fee. The National School Lunch Program also mandates the minimum number of servings of each component that must be offered in a day and in a week, and these vary by grade span. So, for example, the weekly bread and grain ounce requirement at the grades K through five level are different from that for grades six to eight and grades nine through 12. Food service management. The district contracts with Aramark to serve as our food service management company. A food service management company is an organization that may be contracted with by a school district to manage any aspect of the school food service program. School contracts with food service management companies typically go out to bid every five years. The 2022-23 school year is the last year of our current five-year agreement with Aramark. Aramark manages almost all aspects of our food service operations, from providing staff and management to ordering the food and creating menus and recipes. They are our partner in providing nutritious breakfasts and lunches to our students. This year, we are excited to welcome a new district manager, John McLaughlin, and Nick Selvus, our food service manager. Nick handles the day-to-day operations of our food service program and has extensive experience in hospitality and food service. So now get into some menu-specific items. The district follows National School Lunch Program guidelines for portions and nutritional content. Our contract with Aramark requires them to use high-quality, healthy ingredients and offerings. Here are just some of those specifications. 100% juices with no added sugars. Milk must be a minimum of eight ounces FDA Grade A from cows, free of antibiotics and hormones. 1% and fat-free white milk, flavored fat-free milk may be offered at lunchtime. Fresh fruits and vegetables must be offered daily, USDA Grade A. Deli meats must be low-sodium Boar's Head or equivalent. And just a side note on the Boar's Head or equivalent, a number of years ago, this came up, and our food service manager ran a blind taste test for the students to have Boar's Head or an equivalent, and Boar's Head was not always the winner. And Aramark continued to serve what the students preferred but was still in compliance with our contract. Yogurt must be high-quality, FDA Grade A, 100% and all-natural, and contain no artificial flavors or high-fructose corn syrup. 100% grains served in schools must be whole-grain-rich. Oftentimes, Aramark has procured our bread and grain components from the Rockland Bakery, which some of you might be familiar with in Rockland. Beef must have a total fat content of no more than 15% and be antibiotic and hormone-free. Chicken must be USDA Grade A antibiotic and hormone-free, same with other poultry and pork. Eggs are USDA Grade A or AA Large. Snacks must be Smart Snack compliant, and what Smart Snack compliant means, it's guidelines that the USDA has set to make sure they are whole grains, and there's a whole checklist that Aramark goes through with our snacks to make sure they meet this requirement. And cheese must be USDA Grade A or AA, brands Boar's Head, Land O' Lakes, or equivalent. Some of the impacts the pandemic has had on our food service, there have been many, from the shutdown of the serving line to limited menu choices that are easily bagged and transported to alternate locations. We've also felt the impact of supply chain and staffing issues. We are proud to say that our district was able to continue providing breakfast and lunch meals to students throughout the pandemic. From the start of the shutdown in March 2020, straight through to June 2020, and then when school resumed in September 2020, we were able to continue to provide lunch, meals, and breakfast to all students, whether they were in-person, hybrid, or remote. We are also proud to say that we were able to help our neighbors of the Eastchester Union Free School District who do not participate in the National School Lunch Program by providing lunches for their students, some of their students during the 2021 school year. While we start to see a return to pre-pandemic lunch service, supply chain issues continue to impact operations of our programs. Some vendors have also changed up their delivery schedules, where we would sometimes get deliveries from them multiple times per week, it's now down to maybe one time per week. While menu changes were something that would occur in the past, they are happening more often than before. At the beginning of the year, when we started the program, we did face some staffing issues, but now we are happy to say the food service program is fully staffed. Some of the changes that we've made this year in our return to pre-pandemic food service, in December at the middle-high school, we opened up the serving line. Doing this has increased participation, allowed us to serve a larger variety of options with more hot food choices, more sandwiches, including custom sandwiches made to order on our panini press, more fruits and vegetables to be offered. Students can also purchase snacks and à la carte items and beverages. Like most elementary schools, Cottle does not use a traditional serving line for lunch service, and we're working with Aramark to find a way so that students at Cottle can start purchasing snacks. And just as a side note, only complete meals are free, the snacks and à la carte items will incur a fee. Food service goals. Some of these food service goals might be limited due to the pandemic. We will discuss these with the board and the wellness committee. Expanded menu options. We started the school year with limited menu. Nick from Aramark has worked to develop menus with greater varieties and offerings. In the future, we hope to have a return to promotions which increase student meal participation, such as themes, and at Cottle, they had the Lucky Trade Day. A lot of these promotions would really boost our participation. Boosting student satisfaction by having recipes taste-tested by students to ensure they are not only healthy but tasteful options, and finding ways to get student feedbacks, such as surveys and comment cards. Together with our partner, Aramark, we are committed to providing nutrition awareness, increasing student meal participation, improving overall food service, and boosting student satisfaction. Any questions? Oh, sure.
You guys want to?
Yeah, come on up. Give me a cool mic room. Anyone want to bring a chair with you?
Sit here?
Yeah.
Try and sit, because your head's going to be in front of the camera.
So maybe someone on that end there? Okay.
Do you want to give them the mic?
Yeah, let's give you a mic.
Put it in the middle. It should work both, yeah. That's good. So the first question I had, Faith, is just a clarification on the fact that this program is free, if you meet the criteria in terms of what your menu choices are. But it's not free for everyone, right? It's free for everybody, or is it free for certain income class of students, or is it everywhere across the board?
So for this year, the USDA?
Well, this year, I know it's free for everybody.
This year, it's free for everybody. Typically, there are income guidelines. There are certain guidelines that have to be met. We have a process with New York State where they give us a list of students that have benefits through SNAP or Medicaid, and students can also apply through an income application at our office.
Right. So, again, speaking about normal times, not pandemic times, in order to get the free lunch, you need to be qualified?
Correct.
Everyone else pays for the lunch, but it is a reduced price, though. It's a lower price than probably would cost. It's subsidized somewhat.
Yes, it is subsidized, and the last time we were charging for meals, it was $2.85 for lunch. And breakfast, I think, was $1.25.
Sounds right.
Pretty good.
What's an example of an à la carte option? I'm just curious.
So, an à la carte option would be if the student, let's say, just wants the chicken sandwich, and they don't want any fruits or vegetables or anything with it. That would be an à la carte item, correct? Because it does not constitute a full meal.
Okay.
And what would the cost of something like that be? Obviously, not now, but?
That, I would have to look back. They're very, they're different costs. So, it depends if they come up and just buy a snack, that's also an à la carte item. So, it would depend.
And those fancy little plates? Do we have those fancy little plates? I love those little plates.
This one?
Yeah.
No, we don't, but these are up for the students so that they're at the point-of-sale, so they know. And we can put more of these up and send them out and put them on our website.
Do most of the kids pick the meal?
A lot of them do, you know, because, you know, the ladies that work in the lunchrooms are trained really well, and we are offer versus serve to reduce waste, so we don't just, you know, make everybody take it, so that, you know, you don't end up with a cafeteria full of oranges that need to be thrown out. Yeah. So, to reduce the waste, we are offer versus serve, so the ladies know what makes a free meal, and they know the kids really well, so they'll say, "You can take a juice or a fruit." "Are you sure you could take this?" And they'll really offer them what they need to make the complete meal.
The standards that you put up there that need to be met to qualify for the program, I don't have any doubt that those standards are met, but I'm just curious, who checks that? Who inspects? Who makes sure that those standards are actually being?
So, we do. The district does, and that's what Ms. Bigley's firm does. So, we contract with them, and she comes onsite and reviews and goes through. She reviews the menus before they go out to make sure we're offering the correct number of greens and dark, there's versions of vegetables, you have to have a turn around, leafy greens and dark greens and fruits and enough red vegetables and yellow. So, her firm reviews our menus and makes sure that the menus are in compliance, and then we'll come in and make sure that we're actually stocking, you know, the right meats and chickens that we're supposed to based on the contract.
When you do your onsite inspections, are they random, or are they announced?
Yes, no, they're random. And also, the state also comes onsite once every three years to do a review, to check those same things.
And the menus, are those menus, like, available to view, like, ahead of time, like, for the week?
A month out.
Yeah. It's a month out, so the February menus will be coming online shortly. Tomorrow's February, so I think they might even be up on the websites already.
Remind me again how Aramark is compensated. Is it a, because I know, I should know this, but I forget. Is it a flat contract fee, or is there some sort of, is part of your compensation due to sales, or is it just a flat fee?
So, our contract is a type-two contract, and we pay Aramark a flat amount per meal. So, it is?
Per meal sold, or per meal provided?
Per meal sold. Per meal sold. So, like, we get a report of how many meals they served for the month. We have a point-of-sale that keeps track of it, so, you know, it's easy to verify their numbers, and we pay $3.3388 per meal to Aramark.
Just out of curiosity, of the number of students that there are, what is the percentage of students that are actually taking meals? Like, do you know that, how many students are not eating?
We can look into that. We can get that information. Yeah, we can pull that.
So, on lunch, we have about 165 a day in the high school, but in the whole district, on average, we have about 475 to 500.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, even in each schools, like, high school, middle school, elementary?
Yeah, we can pull that data.
I have that on my laptop. I can get that for you.
But imagine you guys are probably guaranteed a minimum amount, though, right? No?
No.
So, if not a meal was sold, you would get nothing?
That's correct.
We actually have, our contract actually has, the district has a minimum return of $20,000, so?
Right, I should remember that, yes.
So that we have a guaranteed return of $20,000 from the program.
The meal rate that we provide, or that we sell to talk a whole, pardon me. That's essentially, we manage the business on your behalf, right? And we charge that rate, and we have to assume all the cost and the burden in that rate, and whatever profit that we can make, could be five cents, it could be two cents per meal, that's what we make within that meal rate. So, it's all rolled up within the number. We don't make anything above what we, the 338.
Right.
So, if I'm managing my costs within that number, that's what I, when we put out the RFP and we review the RFP with the Bigleys, and we bid on the contract, we come up with the meal rate, and we'll assume that there's a certain amount of profit in that for us.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only reason I was asking about the kids who eat versus don't eat, like, if there's, like, certain kids who are not eating consistently, why aren't they eating? What can we do that, like, is there something that's missing that they would want to see? I'm just curious, like, is that, is it more in the high school, middle school? Obviously, the elementary, they're probably eating all the time, but I'm just?
We have that data. I can get that to you.
Yeah, we can pull that data, and, you know, it'll vary sometimes with the weather, and, you know, we'll see participation highs sometimes in the beginning of the year, and then, you know, fall, so there's a lot that has to do with that.
And do you see, like, because I'm just thinking of, like, kids who may need, like, to eat, like, can you see which kids are not eating? Because I'm just thinking, if they're not, okay, that's?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, I just have a question, and I'm going to preface this because I don't want to be insulting, but I'm just going to speak truth to power. So, some of the kids, mine would be one, is not excited about the meal choices and the options, to the point that in previous years, I've had a few come through now, like, "If you're not good, I'm going to make you buy lunch." No! Okay. So, that's not the kind of response that I would want to see. So, I'm thinking, I'm just wondering about the quality of the options. I know you mentioned Boar's Head, that's great, or an equivalent, that's great, but what are some of the other quality of things? And I think, didn't the board, this is prior to me coming on, didn't you all do a taste test or something?
Yeah, so, yeah, let's cut to the chase. I think one of the main reasons why we wanted to have this discussion is, I don't think any of us doubt the quality of the food in terms of the nutritional quality. I don't think there's any concerns there at all. I know that this requires, you guys make sure that that happens. I think when we say quality, we're talking about quality of taste and quality of desire.
Exactly.
So, that's what I think we were referring to.
Right. A lot of the stereotypes about school lunches, we hear a lot.
Right, right.
Kids and their friends and funny jokes.
The panini thing, that sounds, is that new?
Yeah, so that's something?
Yeah, that sounds?
In the beginning of the year, so, cutting to the chase when it comes to quality, creating a menu when you're packing it in, it's very tough. You've got to create a menu that travels well. Now, things that kids like is very tough. They like burgers, they like dipping patties, and unfortunately, that doesn't really travel well. So, when you have it packed within a container for a half hour, 45 minutes, unfortunately, it gets soggy, and that quality unfortunately dips.
Yeah.
So, when we do switch up the serving line, we'll have a greater variety, and of course, the quality will also be there.
So, when you, you have fresh vegetables, what is that, is that like baby carrots, or is it salad? We don't have a salad bar, do we?
We do have salad options at Cottle and up here. They can have salad if they want. There's broccoli, cauliflower, carrots, celery, I don't know if you want to say some other ones, but we do have, like, we have those options, and they are fresh. Sometimes they're sauteed. We have beans, we have legumes. So, we do have, we do offer those. So, we have those all available.
So then, I'm guessing too, you're looking at too, to see what things are the bigger sellers versus things that aren't, and sort of change it up based on that?
Well, it sounds like you also have requirements you have to meet as far as?
But I'm thinking?
Yeah, the different, right? I don't want to speak for you. I mean, listen, the school lunch program is hugely important. Like, I had a patient today, say, when I was asking, "What fruits and vegetables do you eat?", and he told me, like, "I eat them at school only," you know? And so, I think it's a real, you know, it's a real thing, and it's important that we have nutrition looked at as well.
You know, so I think we recognize the challenge, right? There's a challenge of, you mentioned, which I wasn't thinking about, just the actual transports and all those. Then you have to meet the nutritional needs that are required by the program. And look, let's face it, you have a cost, you have a cost that you have to maintain underneath, and we want it to really taste good. So, it's not easy. I know it's not an easy sort of blend, but to Lori's point, and this is now going back now, maybe four years ago, because it was a while ago, we did, me and another boardman did go down to the cafeteria and try lunch, and I was not very, it wasn't very good. I'll just be honest. That was a couple of years ago, and I think?
What did you have?
I don't know. It was like chicken nuggets or something. I think it was, I think it actually was a burger. I think it was a burger.
I want to try the panini.
Yeah, so, I know recently you guys have made some changes to the menu and broadened it a little bit more, and you're saying there's more changes coming? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, of course, when we have all these restrictions go away, the changes are going to be, of course, shown.
Right.
With those changes coming, with a greater variety, and with the greater variety, there's going to be more kids, more participation, and of course, kids are going to be happier.
So, are you saying changes from, are you talking about changes because when COVID is over, is that what you're talking?
Correct. So, they can't have a self-serve salad bar.
Right.
Oh, right, right.
But when you say changes, though, you mean just going back to what was before?
Yeah, that's what?
Yeah, okay, so it's?
And improvement. It's not just going back to before, improving what?
Just more variety, maybe.
So, how's it going to improve?
So, I mean, I wasn't here before, so I'm not too sure, but in the future, I want to create a salad bar and just maybe a taco section, and just have a rotation, you know? Some that they haven't seen before, more ethnic, and there's just many, many different things.
What we would like to do is create more of the higher-ed experience. That's the ultimate goal, and as you guys are taking that step of renovating and these big changes, which is fantastic, when we talked last week, that gives us a chance to really get back and dial into the menu, and what's the best thing to provide to the district?
Right.
And give the best bang for the buck. So, there is a good, the kids, we want to increase as much participation as possible, and that's, and everybody's happy. So, when you create that maybe higher-ed experience, because they're almost there, we want to really identify stations as a salad or a harvest, there's a soup.
Like they would see in college.
There's a grill, there's a hot food section, and he talks about south of the border. You know, we have a kiosk that we operate in another school that's a huge seller, and it meets all the components of a meal, and the kids love it, and we can't sell enough of it. And that's probably something we should do here.
Yeah, so what kind of, what is that?
It's called tortilla, and it's essentially like a?
Like a burrito type thing?
A dum-dum version of a Chipotle, right?
Oh, nice.
You can burrito, you can bowl, you can, and you shimmy down the line, and you make your own meal, and you're part of the decision.
We're very excited, though, so this is this year, but we've been meeting about next year with the new renovation, and we have been really very pleased with our new manager that's here and with Aramark is really participating in making that cafeteria, both cafeterias, like, really high-level. So, we're excited, you know, about this renovation, and this is a time when the food choices will change, and they've been involved in the planning of the cafeterias in both schools, in both school buildings, because the three schools from the start.
Yeah, I think that's going to make a huge difference. If it's a place they want to be, they're going to be more invested to want.
And, you know, we eat with our eyes, right? And, you know?
That's right.
I was going to say, the judge needs to say, "You taste food first with your eyes."
There's so much more involved in the public scene now, where they go to Chipotle, they go to Subway, and they see everything that's there. It's well-laid out, it's labeled, it's properly in a container. We can create all that, and that is probably there today. If we were allowed to open up without the restrictions, it's just not going to look the same and be perceived the same, because maybe some of the equipment's still old, right?
Right.
But when we get to that stage next year, we can brand each section, and there'll be, you know, I can guarantee there'll be a great participation increase.
So, with that, we, you know, we have diversity, and we do have people, children in our community that maybe they don't eat meat, maybe they're vegetarian, maybe they're have a halal diet or a kosher diet. How will that be integrated to make sure that all of our students have food on the menu that they can eat, to, you know, based on their diet?
I can answer that. If the population's big enough, we would probably designate a piece of the menu that would accommodate that, right? Let's say there's over 100 kosher requirements in the district. Kosher, and then maybe there's 30 halal. The actual guidelines of kosher food is very similar to what the halal food guidelines are, even though the religion doesn't say that, but the food that the kosher folk eat and the halal folk eat are very similar, right? We contract with a full-service provider, and he can either create a? We contract with a, a full service provider and he can either create a freshly made food that we would bring in on a frozen level because it's frozen to make it, you know, last longer, it's preservation method. And we could sell those meals to those kids if it's a smaller amount of meals, amount of kids. If it's a larger population, we would menu the item and make it, you know.
I see. So if we don't meet the numbers to menu it, you can still offer it, but it'd have to be a separate sale price?
Yeah, I mean, like cold kosher food is, is a piece of cake. We, you know, Faith talked about Rockland County. Those are individually wrapped, bagels, muffins, pancakes, waffles. Those are yogurts, Yudi's bread. It's all the stuff you find in the supermarket. We can have all that. The cold part is easy, the hot part is harder. And if there's a large amount of pop, enough people to make that hot meal every day and put it on the line, we could do that, absolutely. Or we'll have a hot food option where we'll be able to know who the students are. You know, the, the ladies are very smart about who the students are, what their, uh, needs are from a dietary perspective and that food could be itemized for anybody that would like to have it.
Right, so in your experience, what's the best way for us to figure out what that demand would be in our district? Is it survey? I guess it would be survey.
Survey, yeah. And we have a student point survey starting in March.
Oh, we do?
You guys have signed off for that and that'll be live.
Will we, will we ask those questions on that survey? Faith, is that going to be included in the survey?
I'll, I'll run the questions by Faith.
Yeah, because I'm not really sure how large of a population we have. I know our PTA, the president brought it to our attention that, that there was questions amongst the parents about that. So there is some demand. I don't know how large of a demand it is.
Yep.
So it's worth exploring.
I mean gluten-free is a huge thing now.
We have gluten-free options.
And even like allergies, not allergies and things?
So we have all that. The school nurse, we're in touch with the school nurse and a lot of that is in, discreetly in our point of sale system. So when a cashier, you know, is ringing it up, they, they'll know if there's an alert, no nuts, you know, gluten and they, they can act on that. So it is, they do have that information and parents can reach out. We do have gluten-free options. Uh, we were discussing today, like we can't guarantee no cross-contamination. But like you said, some of the items are individually wrapped and can be sold like that. And I just want to clarify, um, these meals would not be at a different price. They would be at the same price as another meal or free. So it, it's not, there would be no added charge for this.
Right, just, just that they have to pay for them, they have to pay that, that price though, the same price.
Yeah.
$2.85.
Yeah, yeah, yes, exactly. And, um, you know, the $2.85 was the last price that we set in 1920. So given that lunches are free, we haven't set a price, so it, it might not be $2.85. We still don't know if the USDA is going to extend free meals another year. It's still unknown right now.
It's possible, but we don't know.
When you said nineteen, you mean 2020?
No, the school year 1920.
1920 was the last school year.
Wait a second. It has not cost $2.85 since 1920.
The school year 1920.
The 2019.
Not 1920.
That's impossible.
I think you were speaking $2.85 a day.
Taking economics, I know the difference.
That was really good.
All right, carry on.
So if, but now if a student comes from a family who needs support with payment, would the, those options still be available? Because I'm, am I hearing that right? Okay, all right, without them having to pay the $2.85.
Exactly, exactly. And all meals that we serve, if it's a complete meal, and we would make sure that the kosher or halal option meets the, the requirements and has the components and the caloric intake and it meets all the components, it would be free.
Okay, good.
Oh, so are, in the meals, is that listed, like all the calories and things like that?
Um, we, they have, Aramark has that. It's not listed on there, but they have it to be pulled at any.
It's not displayed, is what you mean?
It's not displayed, no.
Well, because I'm wondering, today when kids go out, that, that they see that very often, like in the stations on what, like, um, what's that chopped salad place, it has calories, so I'm just.
I'm not sure if kids pay attention to that, it's more of a.
No, I know, if you have, yeah, the girls.
Maybe the older kids.
They might pick a different option based on.
I think, I think we're all the same. I think the reason why, I think you mentioned it, the, the visual appeal of food is so important is that we want our kids to eat a nutritious lunch and if it doesn't look good, then they're likely going to skip lunch or get, grab a candy bar instead, right? So it's not, it's a matter of just.
Yeah, but you're saying four years ago it didn't look or taste good.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm going to say, I'm going to tell you, it was, it was absolutely awful, but, but it was, it wasn't great, yeah. It wasn't great.
We'll have a new taste.
I, I, I would, I'd put it this way, I wouldn't, back then, when I, I wouldn't want to eat there on a daily basis. I'm just being honest.
Yeah, I, I know that, yeah. My daughter hasn't eaten in five years.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's why I was wondering, like I think the look would appear.
Yeah, again, we're not trying, we understand that this is not easy to do, what you would need to do in terms of requirements, cost, transport. Get it. I, I understand that it's not an easy thing, so. And I also value and understand, especially being that we are a district with diverse income levels, that this, this benefit is an important benefit. We have, we do have a, a, a fairly, you know, a low-income faction. So this is important that these lunches are free to some. So that leads to my next question, like, just playing devil's advocate, like you mentioned, Eastchester doesn't participate in this program. So like what is the impact, and I already know one, we don't get the free meals, but what is the real impact of not participating in this program going forward and going off, off this program? So what's the real impact of that?
So it, it would require a totally different contract with Aramark. So right now, we are paying them the flat rate of $3.33.3388 per meal. And that's regardless of inflation or any changes in the cost that it costs them to run the program. If we switch to pulling out of it, out of the National School Lunch Program, it would be, um, as Heather was explaining to me earlier, a type three contract, which is where we absorb all those costs. So if the cost of labor goes up, if the cost of getting the products here goes up, we absorb all those costs. So it would increase the cost of the program. And then on top of that, we would still need to provide meals to the students that are free and reduced. So the taxpayers would have to subsidize that.
And is that what Eastchester does?
I'm assuming that's what they do. Yeah, so like we, we provided the meals for the Eastchester Free and Reduced kids during the 2021 school year. So, um, that came through our district, but we have about 164 free and reduced students.
District-wide?
District-wide, mhm. So if, if all of those kids ate for 180 days, it would be about $98,000 and that's just lunch. And that's at the cost now, the contract cost now. So it, it would be a cost, you know, you, while there's no law that says we have to provide those meals, I mean, for homeless and foster kids, we do. But, you know, it's, you know, knowing that a student might not be able to eat, you know, it would have to be subsidized.
Oh, not even.
So the $98,000, you say subsidized, but it tax, it comes out of our budget, basically, it comes out of our operating budget. So that would be $98,000 and then, and then the kids that are paying for lunch because they don't qualify, the pay, the cost would be more.
Correct.
It wouldn't be the $2.85, it'd be something, or the $3.33, it would be something, oh, the $2.85, sorry. It'd be something more than that.
Correct.
Now, but here's the question though, is the quality of the food and taste, taste quality different? Is it, is the same food or, or is it different food that comes in?
Well, I mean, we have, um, our contract with Aramark, you know, calls for very high-quality foods and you would still have the same limitations you have on, you know, having to cook however, 500 meals, getting it packaged, transported, keeping it warm. So, um, I, I couldn't say, but, you know, as far as quality, I think our contract has a very high-quality requirement, given all the, the grade A, no high fructose corn syrup.
But if that's, I don't mean to cut you off, but if that's the case, then why does it, why does any school ever opt out of this? If it's not better to not be in it, then why ever not be in it?
So I can answer that, if that's right. I mean, sometimes the, the population of a school, right? If it's high enough, then it would have the demand to kind of keep that type of operation going. I don't know if you have enough or a large enough population here to convert to a non-NSLP. But I, I was talking with Heather about it just not very long ago. You know, I have accounts that do a hybrid model where the lower schools are on the National School Program and the upper schools are not. So, but at the end of the day, there's a wellness committee that's deeply involved with the decisions that would be made and you don't really venture that far away from an NSLP program.
Right.
To be quite honest.
Yes, I guess what I'm saying, and I think, I think you're answering my question, is it's clear what the downside is for going off this program on the cost side.
Correct.
What's the upside? Is there an upside to not being on the program?
We, that's like the crystal ball question, I don't know. I would say based on the, the, the size of the school, I would say that's a pretty, pretty risky move. I'd like to run the numbers, I didn't, I didn't check.
But I guess what I'm saying is like, so what's the benefit besides cost? Because it's clearly a cost, it's clearly on the cost side, it's beneficial to be in the program, that, that's clear. But is there another side of this, of this coin where if by not being in the program, there's, there's something better about the program in terms of the food that's offered? Again, when I say quality, I mean that, you know.
Do school districts ever profit off the school lunch program?
Heather, do you want, off of the school lunch program?
Yeah, like, so like, I guess what I'm asking is, I know I shouldn't be speaking after my last comment, but. Somebody should have cut me off, but he didn't. So I'm going to go for it. Like, we're talking about the money that it costs and usage of the program and so forth and so on. So I would imagine if you scale it large enough and if you have enough kids, like if you have like a huge district and tons of kids and the food's awesome and everybody buys it, that where, who gets the profit of that?
We, we have made a profit, actually.
So it's actually a nonprofit school lunch fund that you have. So that school lunch fund, the monies that come into that need to stay in the program. Anything that you have coming in, whether it's from reimbursements from the government or it's from those à la carte sales for snacks and beverages and, and extra chicken patty sandwiches, all of that money goes in your C fund and needs to stay there and also just be used for the improvements.
Right, it's the reason why we have a chunk of money that we're putting towards the cafeteria.
But I'm saying the schools that don't opt into this program, do they have a different structure where like they get the profit some, in some other way? It goes into a different account or, like, what is the benefit? Why wouldn't ever, like what Pete's saying, am I what? So like, what is the benefit to not being in the program?
Some of the benefit. Some of the benefits for not being in the program, I think that at the higher level, students might be able to see things like, I see lots of black and white cookies, I see larger muffins. So items that you would not encourage in the National School Lunch Program because frankly, it's just not allowed.
Okay, so better tasting food, but not so nutritious, is what you're saying?
Right, say french fries, we can make them in a fryer, but here, we can't, because they have to be baked in an oven.
Okay, so now we're getting to it. So, so, so there's a better, not better, but more different, diverse choices, but not necessarily nutritional choices.
Yes, and.
So it may taste more like a restaurant than what you make at your house.
Because you are allowed to do things that you're not allowed to do in the National School Lunch Program, such as fry things and order, you know, the, the larger bakery items from, from local bakeries.
I think the stations are going to make a huge difference.
I do too.
I really do.
What did you say, coffee?
You can have coffee if you're not on the National School Program. Today, you can only sell decaf.
Oh, interesting. Okay, so, so there is more, more options and variety in terms of menu, which is maybe not.
I wouldn't say the quality is, you know, a whole lot more different.
Yeah, understood.
From a nutritional aspect, you're saying, right? So it's like the taste.
But it's easier to make sweet stuff taste better, that's the bottom line.
I'm restricted on how much salt you use when you cook. That's what I figured and that's why it doesn't taste good.
It's absolutely one of the biggest restrictions, I would say, of the program.
Yeah, because, um, like I think that everything tastes better when you add extra salt. And so maybe the solution is, you just send them, you get a bunch of those packets from Costco.
So this question I have, just so I have full visibility, I know the answer to this ready. Is there, is there, um, an option to hybrid your service and another service? Meaning like some sort of outside, um, you know, other option? I don't know, does that violate the program? And obviously, that would probably not be advantageous to you guys because it may cut into the amount of sales that you have. But if we wanted to, I just wanted to know options. If we wanted to bring in another vendor to sell some other piece of. Yeah, is that something that's contractually allowed?
Or like what about the, like a local pizza place, if they supplied pizza, I don't know if that's even.
For example, yeah, just, just to understand, like is that a violation of the program to do that? And, and is it a violation of our contract with you guys?
Yeah, unfortunately, that is.
I would assume, I would assume that it would be. I would assume that.
The other thing is the guarantee, sorry to interrupt you, but the guarantee, in order for us to meet that, we need X amount of people in the school, X amount of service days. And if we don't have that, we could ask for an exception, meaning not return as much money to the district. Is that 20, I have to make you the 20 grand. We usually return a lot more. But if there's less people, let's say you bring in a food truck or a pizza day from a local vendor, that's going to impact revenue clearly.
No, no, I would expect that, yes. I kind of figured, I know the answer to that, but I figured I'd ask it anyway.
It's a good question though.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so, and then as far as, so we have, the last year, we have you guys on contractually, it's next year essentially, right? And then hopefully, we'll get back to that normal menu for next year, I hope. And then moving forward, I forget, I should know this because I've been on long enough, but I just don't remember. What is the, the season when, when we entertain new contracts? Does that happen?
Yeah, so it'll start next year for the 23, 24 school year. And it's a very large bidding process. It's huge. It's a huge, the wellness committee will be involved and it basically lays out all the specifications and that's the time where we can say, you know, we, that's the time when the district had set all those guidelines about antibiotic-free, hormone-free meats and chickens and eggs and yogurts and, you know, no high fructose corn syrup and, you know, all those. That's where we would dictate what we want in our contract and.
Right. So it would be probably about a year from right now. And leading up to that time, we would want to be taking, you know, our, our mental notes and such so that we know, okay, we want to incorporate this into the bid specs because you're going to hopefully have those, those specifications for another five years. It's a, it's actually a one-year contract that can be renewed for up to four additional years to make it five years. But I know the district and also the food service management company look at that as a five-year partnership. You know, you don't want to have to do this every year.
Right.
So it's a good opportunity in a bid year to incorporate the new specifications, anything that, you know, we're thinking of so that the management company knows, okay, I need to, you know, my meal rate might need to be a little bit higher if you want to have organic yogurt instead of non-organic yogurt as a, as a standard, just as an example.
Right.
And that meal rate is going to be set for them for five years and it's only increased by the CPI each year, if it's the only increase that they get. So that's why it's so important to put those specifications in that, in that new contract.
All right. You guys good? All right, appreciate the time, really do. So yeah, hopefully, hopefully we'll get an opportunity to see that, that, you know, that returned menu next year with the new cafeteria and, and be able to sort of evaluate that for the next contract. Hopefully, we get that opportunity and we don't continue in this state for much longer.
I have to say though, Nick's done a great job. Thank you very much, Nick and John. I mean, from September to now, it's, it's a great improvement and we're really excited that Aramark is excited about our new renovations and, and really.
Yeah, that's an important, we want to have this discussion because we're excited about the new cafeteria.
Yeah.
And obviously, we want to have the food match to decor and everything be great, so, yeah, good. All right, appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Might as well, probably going to have some more desks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sparks. I think that was a wonderful discussion and thank you to the board for all your input. And next, we are going to have our technology planning and evaluation process. And we have Mr. Keo will present on that. He's our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. He'll spend some time looking back at the last few years of our technology implementation and then present pieces of the draft plan the technology committee is composing. Since Mr. Keo's arrival, we have seen our programs flourish and we appreciate his patience and expertise navigating a pandemic and we appreciate his patience and expertise navigating a pandemic as well as propelling the district forward. We are fortunate, truly, that our curriculum director is also a certified educational technology specialist. The plans you will see tonight demonstrate the artful integration of technology into teaching and learning, where technology supports quality instruction, but does not supplant it. Mr. Keo and I often attribute these successes, truly, to the hardworking and dedicated teachers and to the extremely talented, district's talented peer coaches. We're very lucky to have them. As you know, our peer coaches, Ms. Mundell, Dr. Mosner and Mr. Moore, support our implementation of technology at the ground level. Research shows and we know that this job embedded local professional development is among the most successful approaches. We will take you tonight into different classes, looking into our innovation lab at the elementary school. This was open to students for the first time this year and we are thrilled to see it come to light with technology and engineering lessons. We will also take you to our new entrepreneurship class. And you may find yourself wanting to invest in our students' proposals. A special thank you to some of our teachers who are here tonight. Ms. Watson, Ms. Mundell, Mr. Mo, Dr. Mosner and Ms. Kukase, who contributed to this evening's spotlights, and we really spotlighted them tonight and their great work. We appreciate their dedication and commitment to these important, very important efforts in innovative teaching and learning. And we thank Mr. Keo and our administrators, Mr. Marash is here tonight, and all our administrators for helping us propel the district forward in terms of technology. And I invite Mr. Keo up now to present his hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman, for that introduction. It's a pleasure to present our progress and thinking around district technology tonight. Uh, thank you to Ms. Mundell and Ms. Watson for being here tonight. Uh, for an overview, uh, we'll start off with what our technology plan is. As you may know, the technology plan is a document all districts must submit to the state. It allows us access to state funding. It's a focus on how technology advances learning, either through access, student experience or through teacher capacity. It also allows us to reflect on the strategic plan and frame our efforts in technology within our district's broader movement. We submitted a three-year plan to the state in 2018 that was accepted and we are now at the position where we must submit a new plan. This is in essence a companion piece to our strategic plan with a focus on technology. The New York State Education Department has specific goals. They ask drive our planning at the district level. These are all woven into our district goals, those that were written in 2018 and those that are currently being developed for our 2022 plan. This process relies heavily on stakeholders. We have a committee that meets monthly to discuss matters of technology planning, integration, budgeting and evaluation. As you can expect, this year there's a big focus on that technology state plan. Committee is helping to collect stakeholder feedback and input and provide perspectives. Members of this committee can be seen here. Meanwhile, the work of the technology plan is being driven by a smaller steering committee. Uh, this group of individuals, uh, can be seen here. Uh, thank you to our parent representatives. Uh, thank you to the PTA for providing such active and insightful, uh, parent representatives. And thank you to Dr. Gerald for your contributions as our board representative. Uh, we work closely with technology consultants, our regional information center and local districts. Uh, the steering group writes with an eye toward compliance, but toward also deepening our thinking around technology vision and our district strategy. We are lucky to have these two committees informing this process. Uh, we will begin tonight with an evaluation of the 2018 plan. I will review its visions and goals and demonstrate where it has taken us. I will also present an early draft of our new plan's vision and goals. In a few weeks, you will get our completed plan with, uh, comprehensive action steps. So we hope tonight's presentation will provide a framework and serve as a preview of what you can expect. So let's first look back to the 2018 plan. COVID-19 has had a two-pronged effect on our technology planning. It has delayed some initiatives while also flooding our system with new resources and skills. This has meant a mix of pros and cons when it comes to the technology role in responding to the pandemic. Uh, an increase, for example, in purposeful use of technology also resulted in an increase in screen time. An increase in resources and tools also resulted in an increase for more kids, for kids to organize and manage. So we continue to find ourselves in this position where we have to leverage technology's potential, but be cognizant of its negative impacts, uh, usually mitigated through executive function support and flexible learning experiences. Additionally, teachers have developed skills and flexed their creativity. This has meant more was asked of our peer technology coaches who rose to the challenge every time. In terms of hardware and software, we continue to move away from arm-mounted smartboards toward the flat panels similar to what we're presenting this on. Uh, last year, when we created new spaces in areas like cafeteria, our placement cycle was accelerated with more boards. Investments that we made in technology during the pandemic have not gone to waste. Uh, additionally, uh, this included purchases of document cameras, Chromebooks and software such as Newsela, NearPod and Kami. Our technology department continues to meet state and federal mandates. And lastly, our technology team is participating in planning around some big upcoming projects. This includes the Capitol project as well as an upgrade to our wireless infrastructure. So these were the three goals articulated in 2018 and, uh, we're gonna spend some time reflecting on each one. So first, we pledged to promote accessibility on our school website. Uh, the first goal represented two action items, which was finding the right tool and training staff. Last year, we trained staff responsible for the website in ADA compliance. We also updated our website to include an accessibility statement and directed any concerns regarding accessibility directly to me. Our videos, whenever possible, use captioning. And in the picture on the left, you'll see we get alerted when there is something missing from our website layout. Um, as an example, all images on the web are supposed to use what is known, something known as alt text, which allows screen readers for visually impaired users, uh, to hear a narration of what is on the screen. It's an often overlooked piece in web design. However, um, our ADA guide on Echoc alerts us to these frequent oversights, um, in general. Uh, next, uh, we are gonna take some, uh, visits to classrooms. There are four, uh, different videos that I'll share tonight. Um, and ultimately they help to bring our second goal to life, which was focused on redefining curriculum and instruction for technology education. Um, we'll visit a few classrooms that illustrate each of these three strands. Uh, in the first video, we'll stop over at the innovation lab. Uh, thank you to Ms. Mundell, who again is here with us tonight, uh, for this peek into the work her students are doing in technology education.
In the Cuddle Steam Lab, students in grades two through five experience science, technology, engineering, art and math with hands-on projects in a state-of-the-art learning environment. Students learn about the importance of digital citizenship, computer sciences and work through technical competencies. Students frequently reflect on knowledge required from our project-based learning in order to perform a specific role and receive a specific outcome. When tasked with challenges, students work together using trial and error, collaboration and research in order to problem solve and get their desired results. Here in the Steam Lab, students are preparing for future careers in engineering, coding, technology, science, math and so much more. Students are working on coding a video game in which the main character needs to defeat evil and collect as many gems as possible, programming two different types of robots where the robots are navigating their way around the classroom and the other on a maze, and how to create cartoon animations and turning it into a digital cookbook. It is amazing to see the students collaborate, become excited over new projects and enjoy their space here in the lab.
Next we'll visit Dr. Moser, who takes us to the other end of the K-12 spectrum and highlights all the great things happening in her AP Computer Science class.
The College Board describes AP Computer Science principles as "an introductory college-level computing course that introduces students to the breadth of the field of computer science." Students learn to design and evaluate solutions through the development of algorithms and programs. They incorporate abstraction and use data to discover new knowledge. Today, students were working on a rock-paper-scissor project. They were given the starter code that showed a complete user interface and basic code. Students had to figure out how the program works and decide how to write the code. Creative development is where students learn the formal iterative design process as well as the less rigid process of experimentation. They encounter phases of investigation and reflecting, designing, prototyping and testing. Collaboration is an important tool at any phase of development, so students learn to work both independently as well as in pairs or small groups. They also learn the overall impact of computing. Computers and computing have revolutionized our lives. And to use computing safely and responsibly, we need to be aware of privacy, security and ethical issues.
Uh, our next two visits will focus on digital citizenship and project-based learning. First, we'll hear, we will, we will hear from Ms. Watson, who is our counselor at the elementary school, also who we welcome here tonight, and Dr. Moser. They'll discuss curriculum that's been mapped in the areas of digital citizenship.
Social emotional skills are critical to every child's academic and personal success. Every month, I push into the classrooms to teach a social emotional lesson through the Rethink curriculum, which is aligned with Castle standards. We know that COVID has impacted students in many ways, including academically, socially and emotionally. The Rethink digital platform and dashboard of online materials and lessons have helped our students identify emotions, become more aware of their thoughts and learn how thoughts and emotions can impact actions. In addition, we dedicate time to discussing what it means to be a good citizen online and off. This means being kind to one another, acknowledging who might be on the other side of a comment either spoken or typed, and behaving appropriately, responsibly and safely.
In 2018, middle school teachers Frank Greco, Ann Richter and myself, Catherine Moser, met to discuss the STEM curriculum for grades six through eight. While each grade has its own individual focus, it was agreed that an emphasis on digital citizenship was needed across the grade levels. In STEM eight, students explore internet safety, information literacy, privacy and security, creative credit and copyright, and their own digital footprints and reputation. These topics are built upon each year, empowering students to deal with the ever-changing world of technology and the internet.
And lastly, we'll present some exemplars from our entrepreneurship course. These represent the culmination of a particular project, but also represent the culmination of a lifetime of technology learning at Tuck Host Schools. Uh, my apologies in advance, I had to cut a ton of good quality stuff from these presentations. I asked for a few examples and they sent me too many good examples. So, uh, it was an embarrassment of riches. So I try to whittle it down as best as possible.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Kukase and I'm here to discuss our recent prototyping project and the entrepreneurship elective. The importance of persevering and not giving up on your passions are common themes that we often discuss in the class. Student voice and choice are big parts of PBL. In the prototyping project, students have many opportunities to make decisions. The first is what type of business venture will they create? Will it be a product or a service to solve the problem that they identified? The second is how will they construct the model for their prototype? Will it be a sculpture made from materials in the art room, a detailed drawing, a 3D print or a website? And lastly, students will decide how they will present their business venture.
Hi investors. Do you wish you had a place during the day to drop your dog off and then stay active? Well, I know just the place, the Potty House. We are a hotel and daycare for dogs that is open 24/7. We give back to our community by working with shelters to hold adoption events, do drives for dogs and we bring shelter dogs to our facility to play and have a good time. The reasoning behind creating the Potty House was to ease the worries of dog owners who are busy and to establish a community where all dogs are taken care of. And this is our website where you can find anything you need about the Potty House, how to contact us or what we offer at our facility. Now investors, do you want to join our pack? Invest now.
The assignment was broken down into small manageable tasks, providing multiple opportunities for meaningful feedback that could be applied before the final summative assessment of student work. Jeweler's Secret, Keeping Classy Compact, is a jewelry box company founded with your needs in mind. Our sleek design, compact structure allows for maximum storage in minimal space. Here is a model of it. So this is what the exterior would look like and this is an interior. The elegant appearance of the box ensures that the beauty of the jewelry inside will not be tarnished by the unpleasant casing on the outside. This is Jeweler's Secret, Keeping Classy Compact.
The design process involves identifying a problem, researching information, brainstorming possible solutions, creating a prototype and using marketing strategies to communicate the effectiveness and the need for this solution to the customer segment.
Hello, my name is Jigella Barati. Ms. Kukase gave us an assignment that made my classmates and I think outside the box. We had to come up with a product that was one of three things. What if, mix and match or solve it. Welcome to the ECT Core. I used grabbing paper to sketch out my idea. I researched my idea and went to work. The ECT Core is a portable extension cord that runs on batteries. It can charge cell phones, plug-in lights and other electronics. The biggest advancement about the extension cord is that it is portable and does not need an outlet to work. Stay at the beach non-outlet in sight, pull out the ECT extension cord and keep those electronics alive.
Cozy umbrella. The cozy umbrella, in short, is an umbrella designed to provide the comfort and convenience that normal umbrellas fail to offer. Our key features are the rubber grip, double canopy and a light build. All the things, you know, that would make the perfect umbrella. The rubber grip for the, the textured rubber makes it easier to hold and harder to let go. So let's say your, your hands are a little greasy or something like that. The rubber grip will make it a lot easier for it not to slip out of your hand like a banana peel. You know, it's, it's very embarrassing what it does. This is the box. It's a very cozy box. And once I have the website up and I know how I'm gonna ship it and get everything figured out, I want to get into retail, once we have, um, the big enough market for it.
So what is Athletes Off Duty? It's basically a stylish street style for competitors after the game ends. As athletes, we are known for wearing our merchandise, our uniforms, you know, kind of what I'm wearing now, what represents the programs I'm in. And it's not just athletes. It sounds very one-sided, but there's always, everyone's an athlete in their own way, whether you go for walks, it's competitive, it's not competitive, either way, the style is for you. This company offers all genders and products for, you know, dresses, pants or shoes, accessories. It's a streetwear inspiration, fashion-forward, safe to wash and dry products. People may think, well, there's not many athletes out there. Actually, 57% of high school students played one, at least one sport in a community team or competitive either way. At the end of the project, students were provided a reflection form from PBL Works, where it broke down the reflection into two parts. One about the student and two about the project. It asks questions such as what was the most important thing that you learned from this project? With the students' helpful feedback, I'm able to make positive changes to the lesson to improve it for future learning and student growth. Thank you for listening.
Uh, our third goal, uh, again, thank you to the teachers for, and the students for their voices. I think they helped bring a lot of those goals to life. Uh, our third goal focused on new and flexible learning environments through the use of modern movable furniture and technology. Here you'll see some images of our learning spaces in the library, some furniture used in our classrooms such as the standing desk, uh, with the new wing in Cuddle. Uh, you might remember some of the images from, um, Ms. Mundell's lab, um, as well as plans for our upcoming renovations at the middle school and high school. Now, in developing our 2022 plan, uh, we met as a group to talk about vision. And, uh, as we, we, you know, of course talked about the pandemic and where it's brought us and where we want to go forward. So as we pivot away from the pandemic, we are looking to capitalize on all of the new learning and resources. As such, we define the 22 vision you see here. Uh, it's a vision that links to the 2018 vision, uh, but one that actively removes barriers, enriches learning and supports the district's mission statement. Uh, we do this through engaging students and cultivating real-world connections, uh, similar to what you saw in Ms. Kukase's class, uh, building resilience, similar to what you saw in Ms. Watson's video, and fostering collaboration, which you saw throughout the videos. We were advised to create goals in these three areas. As mentioned previously, our goals must be linked to New York State Education Department's goals and aligned with our strategic planning. And since our strategic plan was built with contemporary. And since our strategic plan was built with contemporary teaching and learning in mind, this was not a significant departure from other planning processes. So in each of these three goal areas, we'll present these tonight, even though we're continuing to refine them, and develop the associated action items. We have a few more meetings with our consultant and our work group. The first goal we defined was working around the area of teacher skill and competencies. We want to see technology play a more direct role in supporting teacher access to data. This could be accomplished through more targeted PD and coaching around benchmark and learning data, as well as inquiry groups that allow professionals to monitor data and set goals for improvement. Technology, in this case, will supplement, not supplant, efforts. Teachers will be the heart of continuous improvement, but we want to focus on having technology support them. Secondly, the state encourages us to, well, excuse me, requires us to monitor and report access to technology for students at home. We wanted to go further than that. So in the area of access and infrastructure, we want to support family efforts to connect and stay connected. This may be through parent events, talking about the types of technology we offer and skills that they can use at home, or distributing information about the type of assistance that we can provide as a district. To that end, we also encourage our families to complete our digital equity survey. The portal is currently closed for grade completion, but when families log in to check their grades, please do make sure to check the digital equity survey tab. More information about that will be emailed with the announcement of the opening of the portal. Lastly, looking at student learning and impact, we want to set out to increase active learning experiences. Similar to what you saw in Ms. Kase's classroom, how can we use technology to leverage real-world connections in other subject areas? Either through current event services like Newsala, Zooming with Authors, or project-based learning. In our work as a steering committee, we felt it might make sense to start with a focus on the humanities and arts. The three goals here are the groundwork for our action plan. However, they are not the only technology goals we will pursue over the next few years. Other ideas came up in our planning sessions with our steering committee and with our larger committee, many of which lit sparks that we are following up on. And as the years go on, new initiatives in technology will emerge, and they will be woven into our plan. The planning requires an eye toward the future, but also monitoring these areas as areas of growth for us. In terms of next steps, the timeline you see here, because of the work of our committee, we are on track. We are nearing the middle with the presentation to the board, but we will continue to collect and reflect feedback. It's a process that really requires us to move forward with the development of the plan throughout the year while continuing to collect feedback and talk to stakeholders. Within the next few weeks, we will finalize our, we will reflect on the feedback, finalize, and compose a draft that we'll present to the board, ultimately submit to BOSsies for checks to make sure that we've included everything we need to include, and then submit to the state for final approval. And lastly, just a thank you, we've really enjoyed this process. Again, we're only halfway through, but looking back, and we've especially enjoyed looking forward. Special thank you to our committees, both the tech committee and our steering committee. We also want to thank Toccoh teachers, community members, and students who make sure Toccoh technology is a tool that is used effectively to advance our district's enduring goals. Lastly, thank you to the board for their support of all of these initiatives.
Thank you.
That was great, I'm always so impressed with the videos.
I know.
Thanks.
Yeah, I felt like I was watching Shark Tank.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, do you have a patent on that jewelry box?
They had these great plans, these like charts and things, I'm like, I gotta fit all these into the video, so.
Yeah, please, please.
And I love the greasy hands trying to hold it.
Yeah, it's a problem, you know, people have.
And the potty.
Right.
The Potty House, like I had to like say that. Potty House.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Your presentation was very good, too.
Thank you.
Two really good presentations. And this stuff is super exciting. I mean, I'm just glowing over this, it's awesome, it's awesome. Thank you to you guys. Such good stuff.
The entrepreneurial, that's amazing.
My daughter didn't want to take it this year, I'm so pissed. I cannot believe she didn't do it. I was like, you got me, she fought me. No, it's amazing, it's really, really good stuff. All of it was excellent. I mean, I don't even have anything negative, what negative can I say? I mean, it's so positive, it's all positive. All I can say is more, more, more. Whatever, you know, whatever we can do.
Engaging the faculty as a whole, I think, would be an awesome goal. Because, you know, change is hard, and I think for people who aren't technically inclined or maybe haven't grown up with it being such a part of their day-to-day or more resist, not resistant, but you know, hesitant. So engaging all of our staff to really embrace it and incorporate it, I think, in their lessons and their day-to-day would be great.
And I also think the digital citizenship piece of it is important.
It's hugely important.
And I'm really glad you guys are addressing that, that's a big one.
And I'd say I love that the middle school teachers kind of took, focused on that, because I feel like that really is where it comes to be a problem and grows from there, like that is the root of it.
Yeah.
Middle school's a tricky time.
It's an important nexus in the kids', you know, K-12 experience. And there we hit digital citizenship, we hit internet safety, we hit, you know, copyright and content moderation and things like that.
And your reputation is huge.
Reputation, your own footprint, like you know what types of data are you leaving? So it's a really comprehensive program, I'm really, really proud of it.
You should be.
No, it's really good. The entrepreneurial class, too, is there more demand for that that we can fill right now, or are we filling the demand? It's, I mean, do we need to?
I can ask Dr. Linhan and find out, I know that it filled up pretty quickly last year. And I don't know if it filled to the max.
How many spots are there?
I don't know, I could find out.
Okay.
But there were, again, I was able to get a lot of examples of kids who were volunteering to share their work, so it's.
Just, you know, you just watch that, and you just see all the soft skills that are coming together and how valuable that is. The presentation skills, the plan, it's, to me, that is just so invaluable. So if there's, you know, if there's more kids that want to do it and we're not able to accommodate them, I don't know what the solution is, I have to give them, but please, you know, let's figure it out. We need to get more of that stuff.
And promoting it, because I feel like maybe if it did or didn't fail, I have no idea. And for Pete's daughter, clearly he's failing as a parent.
Yeah, I know.
Talk about that later.
I'm the guy who talks about this stuff all the time, and she didn't do it.
Dr. Charles, if one of your kids.
No, that's why she didn't do it, she just spied me.
So we're looking at it during the budget process, because we're just putting that together, so perhaps, you know, another section of it could be a possibility.
And having can promote it, because probably people were new and they were like, wiser teacher, teaching entrepreneur, like, who knows? You know what I mean?
You got a lot of that, what is that?
Right, like, what is that? Why, why would I do that or whatever? Like, if we could somehow.
Yeah, I'd love to.
And have maybe the kids who are in the class talk to their peers. I feel like positive peer pressure is just as effective as negative peer pressure.
Yeah, yeah, we've seen, you know, like her art experience really, like, and her business experience kind of merge into, you see this design process and this marketing process and public speaking. And what I loved about the videos, it talked about all the soft skills, but you also saw their, their voice come through, like, you know, the athlete's identity, and we all wear our jerseys, and if we all wore jerseys, they looked nicer, you know, this is how I'd market it. So it's an eye towards who they are as young people, while still developing these skills.
And helping them find their passion.
Yeah.
Which I feel like is so much of life, like, if you enjoy what you do, you never really work.
Yep. If you love pets, and you make the Potty House, are you, you know?
It also contextualizes why you're learning this stuff you're learning in school. You get to see why math is important, budgeting, you get to see why English is important, you're writing, you're writing out your business plan. So it just puts it all into perspective really well. Now, that, that class is offered to, what grade levels?
Seniors and seniors, right?
Seniors, right?
Yeah, but I believe there might have been a sophomore in this, so I'm not sure the, you know.
It was offered to sophomores.
Yeah, definitely there's a sophomore.
I wonder if there's a possibility for like a middle school version, maybe a little bit, you know, maybe that was something to get them sort of. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it also, I mean, it's gotten us thinking a lot about financial literacy and things like that. Dr. Linhan's talked about some really great ideas, so it's kind of sparked, you know, a lot of thinking in that area.
Yeah.
About transferable skills.
Yeah.
Oh, last year at the budget presentation, I was, I knew it was going to be great. Ms. Kase's initial presentation of the program, like, you knew that it was going to be good stuff, she brought a lot to the table, and clearly.
Right, and also, I think you all saw the Innovation Lab at Cottle, and you saw the students, you know, programming, robots, and all of the high-level work in AP technology. And also, I think that all of this sparks everything in the school district. It is, it is growing.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think it sets Toccoh apart, actually.
I do, I do, too.
We should showcase it a little more, too. I don't know if there's any way to feature some of this on the website, maybe even, you know, select one of the best presentations and have them do it in front of the board or something.
I think that's a great idea.
So we can get more exposure to it and show, show more of what's happening here.
What the kids are doing in the, in the elementary school, too, in the lab is impressive, they're so young.
Well, as I say, it's impressive to see them working together.
Yeah. And I also can't wait till those kids are in the entrepreneurship course, and we see the impact of like the investments we made at the elementary school. You know, that STEAM lab in the elementary school, it's not, it's not a requirement, it's not the norm, you don't, you know, this is a really Toccoh unique feature, and I'd love to see how that develops as kids go through the system. What these presentations will look like in a couple of years when kids are making video games and robots in second and third grade.
So I also wanted to comment, because it kind of fell through the cracks a little bit, but I did think your SEL piece was really good. No, I really think it's very, very important, and that was actually cool to see, too. What kids are getting that? Is it, I know it's the elementary school level, but what, what ages are getting that, that interaction from you?
So it's every class, K to five.
Every class?
Yes, every class.
Good. Very good.
And in the middle school, both the psychologists and the guidance counselor went into classrooms, too, to talk about digital citizenship in their stranger danger program just recently.
And do you feel that's been impactful? I mean, do you get a sense of a return on that?
Yeah, I actually, it's my favorite part of my day, when I get to push in, because, you know, Cottle's so big, and I'm one person.
Yeah.
But it really helps me get a pulse on the students and gets me front-facing. You know, it would be hard for me to see every student in a one-to-one basis or even a small group setting, so putting it in the class, for my, it's my favorite part of it.
I think eventually, you might want a presentation of the whole rethink program, because I know you heard about it at the last budget presentation.
I feel like the social emotional part of learning in the school community, especially now as we're going out of the pandemic, is going to become more and more important. Like, if you look in the news even, all the suicides of the 20-year-olds, it's like, it's terrible. That's going to be the aftermath, you know, and I think that's hugely important. I also think people probably can't hear.
Yes, I was just thinking.
She was speaking nice and loud, I think, hopefully, the problem with engaging you is my fault, but people can't hear you from, from home, but you were speaking pretty loud. Hopefully, our microphones picked it up.
She's a teacher, she can project.
I'm most excited about, just because it's so important today, that we tap into critical thinking skills and creativity of our students, because education prior to the pandemic, we really kind of stayed in a box, because we've been doing it for this way, this way for so long. And it's really forced teachers and educators like myself to really get outside of our own box, so that our kids can really shine and do what they, what interests them and how they can apply what it is that they're learning. So I'm just thrilled about this. I'm on the committee, so.
I know, I know, sorry, you hit a lot of repetition.
What I had to say, I just had to, so, okay. And then, I do want to know, because I know we talked about, like, the scheduling, so for the classes where they're during a period, because we're not doing block scheduling right now. So are those kids, when you're doing, when they're working on their projects and their assignments, are they able to complete that in that 40, what is it, 42 minutes or whatever? And are they having it taken home, and are we making sure that they have access, if they have to take things home to finish for these particular programs? Are they able to do that at home? Like, I'm thinking about technology equity and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and that's really important, you know, if there's anyone listening who, you know, a kid comes home and isn't able to access these programs, they should definitely reach out to my office, and we'll, we'll connect them with either a hotspot or a device that's more reliable at home. But a lot of the stuff that you saw in this video, the shots of the software, are all cloud-based, so that a kid could literally close their device at the end of class, go home, and open it up, or the next day, open it up and pick up from where they left off.
From the Chromebook.
Correct, so that's one of the nice things about having so many of these services.
Like a OneDrive type manager.
Yeah, like in the past, so much of the stuff used to be downloaded on a computer, you need to use the computer and then put it onto a flash drive. Or if you didn't have access to the expensive software at home, you couldn't do it at home, you needed to wait till the next class. So so much of the services now have been cloud-based subscription models, which have had an impact on like our budgeting, because you're paying per license, not per device. You used to buy like one CD-ROM, and that was the thing, but, so now you pay per student, but that allows our kids more flexibility in terms of continuing their projects.
Now, are teachers feeling like they need more time to really, or are the kids feeling like they need more time, classroom time, to work with their partners? I know we can do it through the cloud and all that, and Zoom and everything that we're doing, but are, is there a need to integrate back and forth, because we talked about block scheduling, back and forth, maybe sometime during the school year, how, what's that look like?
I think it depends on the needs of the project and the lesson at hand. So a lesson that might be more direct, direct instruction, that would probably benefit from not being blocked, but then a project, I think any teacher or student, you know, who's in the middle of a project, wouldn't mind if the bell didn't ring, if they could just keep finishing it.
Right, exactly.
I think it really depends on, you know, the activity at play, but, you know, I think now, teachers had experience designing block, they had experience designing not, they're now able to kind of strategically plan the 42 or 43-minute period with an eye towards, okay, we need to make sure that they have time to reflect, wrap up, so that they can pick up where they left off tomorrow. So having exposure in both models.
So we're having some professional development coming up to help teachers, you know, use, utilize more project-based learning and innovative teaching strategies within their period even, because we spoke to the experts on that, they said that you can do it that way, too. This library will be very conducive for that, you know, so we're very excited about that, too. And I just have to say that the teachers, since the pandemic and during the pandemic, learned so much, and they really embraced it, I mean, it was a huge shift. But we think that all our teachers are pretty much up to pretty high levels with technology right now. And we're continuing it under Mr. Keough's leadership. And what I really love about this school is that sometimes people put together a technology plan, and I've been in a lot of schools and watched a lot of presentations, and it's just to get the stuff to the state, I'm not saying, not on purpose, but you, this is really, what we do in Toccoh was very purposeful, and I really appreciate that.
So you, what's the, what's the return from the school that we get from the state, I'm sorry, when we qualify, what's the dollar now?
I think it's just access, and, I mean, you might be able to speak better, it's like smart funds, it's, I think it like allows you to just get, you know, they'll deny you access to certain funds if you don't have that in place. So it's not like submitting this, they award us a grant as a result, it's just giving us access to the.
Access to a certain part of the budget that we otherwise wouldn't get if we didn't.
Generally related to technology and funding like that.
And to Dr. Goodman's point, you made as part of your next plan, a big part of it, or at least one of the goals, was more professional development, which I think is great. So what does that look like? So what are we talking about when we say more professional development exactly?
Yeah, and I'd also echo what Dr. Goodman said about teachers at Toccoh, I would say Toccoh teachers are techie teachers, they've got these skills that they've learned through COVID, but they've also really kind of taken on to, through their work with pure tech coaches. So building off the success of the pure tech coach model would be something we'd want to do in terms of data and technology. So making sure teachers know how to log into our benchmarking software and incorporate it into the design of their lessons, and meet in small groups, and run reports, and, you know, zero in on certain trends. So the focus would be on how to use technology to really support the data piece. A lot of the professional development around technology will be kind of on like a flashy software or something really exciting, and how can you use it in this classroom? We want to really kind of put the technology piece into the practice of being a teacher, of reflecting on students, on reflecting on your own practice. So whereas, I think goal three is more focused on arts and humanities, and again, we happen to share that with math and science, we just want to make sure we're focused on one area. The first goal, the professional development on goal, on technology and data, would be for everybody. And so that would be working with our pure tech coaches, workshops hosted by me, by outside vendors, and articulating goals for each of the years of the plan.
When do those workshops happen, during like development days, things like that?
Super dense conference days, faculty meetings, and the extended days. So figuring out, like, you know, where do we want teachers to be at the end of the first
groups, to see the alignment with what it is we set as a goal for using the technology to support that. But then also, you know, Dr. Goodman made the point about technology supporting but not supplanting. We would want to make sure that the introduction of the tool is how to use the tool for what you need to do. So it's not like they're mastering using it, but they're not using it when they have these conversations. We want to see the links between the conversations and the tool. So that would be the, you know, real assessment of what and how we're effective.
Okay, good, good stuff.
There are, I just want to say this, because I think education, because of COVID, we've gotten a bad rap on some level. And I just want to say, I think I said it last week or whenever, but I'm gonna say it again, there are so many great things happening in our district right now, and I think that we need to spend more time focusing on the positive things that are happening in our district. And I can personally tell you, I've been here soon 10, 10 years now, this, we have progressed by leaps and bounds from what we had even two, three years ago.
Oh, 100%.
So, you know, I think that it's important that we, and I'm saying this to our community out there, for everyone listening, that we support our teachers and our administrators and our support staff, and we thank them for the hard work that they do, because their work really doesn't stop once they leave this building. I know, I did it. We take it home with us, we think about, we lie in bed, we're like, what are we going to do for tomorrow? You know, like, this is what we do, and we're passionate about it. And I just want the community to understand the type of commitment that we have of our teachers. And they make it, and our administrators and our support staff, they make it so that our kids want to go to school. My daughter wants to come to school. She doesn't care about anything, she just wants to be here. And so for that, I just salute you all, and I thank you, and I'm so happy that I get to be a part of this board at this time, because we're all on one accord.
So I just, very well said, and I agree with everything you said, 100%. And what I was thinking about as I was watching that, it was, this is one of those nights where it's really rewarding to have on this board, because I remember setting these goals a couple of years ago, and to actually see them happening in a really real way is pretty cool. It's pretty cool.
And it's just, you know, in terms of, you know, finding these examples, there are lots of examples of this going on in the building. I chose these four, you know, but there's so many teachers that are experimenting with really cool technologies, working with our peer tech coaches, taking risks in their instruction. So I appreciate what you both have said, because there's really, you know, great stuff.
So I do think we should try and, as much as we can, showcase this as much as we can. Let our parents know what's happening here, because it's really cool stuff.
Let our babies at the elementary level come in, too, sometimes, and show some of their things. I'm just, I'm particular for my elementary students, so let them come in and showcase their little robots. That would be really nice to do, wouldn't it? Yeah, they need some shine, too. Okay, so let's not forget about.
Okay, we'll put this up on the, we'll put this up on the website.
I would just say more, more, more. Just as much of this stuff as we can do.
Thank you.
Great job, people.
All right. Well, one word.
I'm okay.
We've got a little bit of business. I'm going away, yeah. You're not, you're not excused yet, Teraz.
You're not in 1920 anymore.
Yeah, yeah. We have a little bit of business. All right, let's knock this out. We got a little bit. We got a consent agenda. Okay, motion to approve consent agenda items two through four. Do we have a motion? All right, second, Laurie. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? No, all in favor? All right. Business to the board. Approve a donation. Whereas Takahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made in the amount of $1,100 towards fifth-grade school trip, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, resolved that the Board of Education at Takahoe Union Free School District hereby accepts a donation from the fifth-grade class, class parents in the amount of $1,100. Do we have a motion? Teraz, second. Cynthia, any discussion? That's awesome. Thank you very much for that. All in favor? Yeah, thank you very much, the fifth-grade parents. Very generous of you.
Yes, thank you.
I think that was actually a PTA fundraiser that everybody did, not just the fifth-grade parents.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's going to the fifth-grade class.
Okay, it's going to the fifth-grade class.
It's like their annual fundraiser for the fifth grade.
The point setup.
The whole school buys the point setups. And they do REITs, and you can also donate, you can make just a donation and donate it to ECAF, faith, right? No, you don't know.
I'm not sure about that, but it was run for the point setups.
Where you can donate to these places for decorations, for holiday point setups and REITs.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Cool.
It was the whole community, I think that's my point.
That's good.
And the, I just have one question. The Rockland Boulders minor league baseball game, so we're getting ready to go back to...
That's the fifth-grade trip.
Fifth grade, and that's going to hopefully happen this year.
Yep.
Perfect. So we're getting back into that. Yay! Okay, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. Okay, yes.
All right, next we have a side letter agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education at Takahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter agreement dated January 25, 2022, by and between the district and the CSEA, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorized the superintendent to execute the same. Do we have a motion? Laurie, second. Cynthia, any discussion on this? Did you want to?
Yeah, so on January 5th, if you remember how the roads were, they were very icy, and we had a two-hour delay. It was called a coddle. I ended up doing, able to do it, because we were caught off guard, sorry, caught off guard in terms of the ice. So some students and certain CSEA bargaining unit members had already arrived at Cottle, because it was called a little late, prior to the delayed starting time. These CSEA bargaining unit members who reported prior to the delayed starting time provided supervision to the students who reported to school early. There were a lot of teachers that were late that day, so they really worked hard. And due to the unusual circumstances of the unanticipated icy weather and dangerous road conditions on January 5th, we recommended paying the CSEA unit members the chaperone rate. They provided much-needed support during the delayed opening and until teachers were able to arrive.
Okay. Total cost of that is $906.75, correct? All right, all in favor? Okay. Proven agreement.